Followed the council meeting of the ninth of December of 2025. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you be so kind as to call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Form of the President Board.
The City Council, Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, so we have a two-minute presentation regarding Senate Bill SB 515. This is part, yes. Come on, Emery.
Hey, Emery, dang.
Oh, I wonder who that call was from?
Summertime.
Do you have a pass? I haven't seen you pull that pass ever, ev- ever.
Welcome, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, council members and mayor. My name is Tiffany Quarles, and I am with the Coalition for Ajust in Ecuador, California. We're a statewide grassroots organization that is tasked with advocating for reparations for Black Americans who descend from U.S. chattel slavery. And I'm here today to talk to you about Senate Bill 515, which we authored and was sponsored by Senator Laura Richardson. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. SB 515 affects every city in California, including Inglewood. It is a demographic data bill. Beginning January 1st, 2027, every city, including charter cities, and every county in California will be required to update the way they collect demographic data for city employees. Specifically, when a city collects information on the ancestry or ethnic origin of job applicants or employees, SB 515 requires the city to include additional categories for the Black or African-American groups. These categories mirror the one the state already uses under Government Code, Section 8310.6. The legislature clearly states that the bill is there to enhance accuracy, comprehensiveness, comprehensiveness, and consistency of demographic data. And this is specifically for employees who are descendants of persons enslaved and emancipated in the United States, also known as American freedmen. This legislation is to support more effective policy planning and resource allocation at both the local and state levels. The bill also emphasizes the importance of protecting privacy and ensuring any collected data is handled securely and in accordance with state law. Because this requirement applies to all cities, including charter cities, Inglewood would need to update its H.R. data systems, align its employee demographic categories with the new state mandated structure, and prepare for potential state mandated cost reimbursement process if applicable. The reason why the Coalition for Ajust in Ecuador, California, is here today, we want to make ourselves available as a resource to the city of Inglewood. Since our organization has authored this bill and related data equity legislation, we can assist the city with understanding the new data categories, preparing H.R. staff for the transition, community and employee education if needed, and ensuring the city is ready ahead of this, of the 2027 deadline. We will welcome the opportunity to meet with city staff or council to support Inglewood as it prepares for the new statewide requirement. That concludes my presentation, and thank you for your time. And I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. And we're going to move on to the Inglewood Music Festival. In addition to being, you know, a great entertainment vehicle and place for people to come together, actually raised money that's going to be donated to the IUSD. And so, I was going to turn the presentation over for a moment to Councilwoman Dionne Falk. And I believe that the state superintendent, well, not superintendent, but anyway, the boss of the IUSD, Jim Morris, is in the audience. And we're going to present a check, Councilwoman Falk.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, he is in the audience, I see him. Dr. Morris, thank you so much for being here. And this is a group effort, Mayor, council members, pretty much everybody in City Hall. We all work together, we're a great team. But the Third Annual Independence Music Festival that we did this year was successful. And so, we wanted to have you come back, as we usually do, and present the check. Because as you know, when we present the music festival, which is a free concert in the park to thank our residents just for being, continuing to be so supportive of the city and all the efforts that we do. But this is a donation, and we ask them to donate to Inglewood Unified School District every year annually. And so, this donation amount this year was a nice little amount. And so, I want my colleagues to see the amount. Let's see, let's, we could all say it together. I don't even know, but look at.
It's 12 million, 800 thou- no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Today, we're just going to give a down payment of $12,080. Thank you very much.
$12,080. So, I would like, yes. And so, we, the mayor, councilman Gloria Gray, councilman Alex Padilla, councilman Eli Morales, and myself, everybody on this dais, we work really hard. And so, we are so happy to be able to, based on our efforts, to be able to present this back as your donation to Inglewood Unified School District. You know, those are our babies. So, we want to present this check, and if we can take a picture with you.
Okay, and to head off the gadflies, we're not allowed to use general fund monies for another governmental entity. So, these are from the receipts from admission that were paid to the concert. So, I want to make that clear, this is not general fund money. It's a donation, when they're not donations, they paid.
There we go.
Okay. I don't know.
Yeah, it's next week, it ain't today.
Okay, so any person wishing to address the City Council, Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, or the JPA on any item that's agendaized may do so at this time.
Mayor, there was some public comments earlier, and they were passed out to Mayor and Council.
We got them.
Yes.
Great. Item, with that, we'll close public comment, Item 1, CSA 1 and H1.
Warrant register.
Receive and file. What does the next scheduled matter?
Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider approval of a draft fiscal year 2024 through 2025 consolidated annual performance evaluation report for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, that's PH 1, and we'll continue that public hearing until December 16th, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. Let's go to M1.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 16th, September 23rd, and September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budds.
Aye. We'll go to the consent counter, Items 2 through 6.
Don't move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budds.
Aye, A1.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The records reflect that the City Council recessed into closed session. All members were present, with the exception of Councilwoman Falk and Councilwoman Gray, to discuss the sole item on today's closed session agenda. With respect to this item, the City Council received a briefing from legal. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to CI 1.
Nothing to report from the city manager's office.
Jose, you did that very well.
All right.
Did you practice all-waking for that? All right.
He said, "I sure did."
CI 1.
Initiative by Councilmember Gloria D. Gray recommending the Mayor and councilmembers approve city sponsorship of the annual Family Unity Day to be held in August 2026 at Darby Park, not to exceed $130,000.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budds.
Aye, CI 2.
Initiative by Councilmember Dionne Falk recommending the Mayor and councilmembers approve a $40,000 city sponsorship for the Fifth Annual Women Rock Empowerment Summit, presented by the City of Inglewood, tentatively scheduled for Friday, May 1st, 2026, from 2:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. in downtown Inglewood on Market Street. And then Saturday, May 2nd, 2026, from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Inglewood Senior Center, located at 111 North Locust Street, Inglewood, California, 90301.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budds.
Aye, CI 3.
Initiative by Councilmember Dionne Falk recommending the Mayor and councilmembers approve city sponsorship of the Independence Day Music Festival, tentatively scheduled for Saturday, July 4th, 2026, at Darby Park, not to exceed $150,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Budds.
Aye, CSA 2.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on September 16th, September 23rd, and September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor Agency members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, adjourn the successor agency, the Housing Authority's in session, H2.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held September 16th, September 23rd, and September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye. Adjourn the Housing Authority, the Finance Authority's in session, F1.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Finance Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, adjourn the Finance Authority. We have too many authorities. Inglewood Parking Authority's in session, P1.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held September 16th and September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, adjourn the Parking Authority, the JPA's in session, JPA 1.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on September 30th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint Powers Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Budds.
Aye, adjourn the JPA. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment, any person wishing to address City Council on any matter connected to city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. Persons with complaints regarding city management or departmental operations are requested to submit those complaints first to the City Manager for resolution. Is there anyone?
There was a gentleman back there, yes, go to the microphone.
Okay, this is the time.
For the upcoming election in 2026, I needed to know the deadline to have an initiative on the ballot. When would that be, or am I too late?
I don't think you're too late.
Can you give me a date?
We'll have to research that, and I'll tell you what, if you leave your name and number with the Sergeant-at-Arms there, someone will contact you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for your attention and your time today. I'm reaching out to all of you, and I'm here today because
Thank you, Tom.
So, just to give you a little bit of background, I received my bachelor's in science in political science, data analytics, and my master's of science at UC Davis in Business Analytics. I'm currently doing my other master's at USC in project management. I recently got into a situation where I was saving this kid from getting trafficked by his mom, and I got in trouble for it. And I would appreciate if I could have some type of advocacy or influence from you to support me and my criminal case. I don't have any questions.
Okay, I don't know that we can do that. What you can do is you can give your information to the Sergeant-at-Arms here, and someone will contact you to tell you whatever's that we can tell you, but we can't advocate in criminal proceedings, okay?
Or influence as well, please, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll close public comment, we'll go to council comments, and start with Councilwoman Gray in District 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for being here. There were a few initiatives today, and I just want to say that these are different special projects that really benefit the city and the members, the residents, the communities, and that. So, thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman. I'm sure that Councilwoman Falk will talk about that. But you're aware of not only the song, but the others, council members, and events, and they're all to contribute. I just want to make that, you know, that comment. Let's see, last Tuesday was the tree lighting ceremony event, and it was fantastic. Thank you to Intuit, and you have worked with the wonderful job of creating a holiday winter fair. You can see myself and the city treasurer, the city clerk. Was on there as well, as the council members. All of them, all of them were on the float as well as the mayor. It was a great event, I think 10,000 people there, I'm sure the mayor was probably seeing the crowd in the background, which is a wonderful event. So, thank you again to everyone, thank you to Chief Otorato and fire and city police personnel, and everyone who was involved, I believe, in the parade, and it's great to ride on the float. Say Merry Christmas, everyone, we need to. Thank you for that picture. The next one I'd like to talk about is there, this is a Christmas party that we had in Toy Drive. Happened to be one of our commissioners, the picture before, that's happened to be my great grandson, Michael. These are pictures, all the council members and the mayor were there, and the city council, city treasurer, and city clerk, everyone was there that sits on these beds. So, thank you so much for being there, it was a wonderful event. This is my family right there, and next pictures you'll see others that attended. That's the famous Martine's family, it was just great event, and anyone who's been there knows it's wonderful because here in the city, there's a great picture of all of them there. I think those are, you see some commissioners and volunteers, so thank you to commissioners and volunteers that helped make that a success that night. It was just wonderful just to be there and fellowship with everyone, so thank you again. Any more pictures, I'm going to go to the next event. Well, I will mention this, I did get a chance to go to Councilwoman Falk's, went to Wonderland, and it was, it's called the Fourth Annual Snowy Winter Wonderland. It was a great event, lots of people there, I think it was on Saturday night. And it was just great, giving away bikes, and kids were excited, and people were there. There was so many events, we couldn't get around to it, but it was wonderful. But that's why I talk about the fact that it's really a benefit to our community. Here is a toy drive coming up on the 14th. Please let families go about us, we have lots of toys to give away. So, please advertise, let your family members go to bring their kids. It's on the 14th, it's at the I-Cop Center on Manchester Avenue. It will be a great success, please bring everybody here, because lots of toys. Thank you to Maria Camacho, Rams are donating, and also the other group that donated and everyone else that's always sponsoring and being helpful in making sure that it's toys for Christmas, so thank you for that. So, with that, that's in the microphone, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Padilla, District 2.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. So, a couple of things, again, the tree lighting ceremony was a huge success. You know, and you can tell, you know, you say, "Well, how do you know it was a huge success?" All you had to do is look at the kids' faces, and when you see them smiling, laughing, and skipping. When kids are skipping, you know, hey, they're having a great time, right? And I got to tell you, everybody that put that together was, it was amazing. The kids were in the snow, and for some kids, I was standing there talking to a family, that little kid, the little boy, and the brother and sister, boy and girl, they were like, they'd never been in the snow. That was their first time seeing snow. So, they were like, just like, you know, you know, just in shock, you know, of being able to be in the snow here in Inglewood. So, I want to thank everybody that put that together. I also want to thank our police officers. The IPOA has a Christmas sleigh that Santa rides in, and we use that sleigh to come down for the parade down Prairie. The IPOA and the Police Department is also going to be coming around to different parts of our communities in the next couple of weeks with Santa Claus and to hand out candy canes and take picture opportunities with Santa. So, please, look at our city's social media page, so you will know in advance when the Santa sleigh will be in your community, and you can come out with your children and take pictures. I want to thank Councilwoman Gray, her event, Saturday night, huge success. Everybody had a great time, everybody was coming in donating toys that are going to go to families that are in need. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Gloria, for letting us be a part of your success. I, on Saturday, had my annual District 2, as you can see, the photo of some of our volunteers, District 2 Toy Drive and canned food drive. So, we do not only the toys, we also do canned food for families in need. So, that's why I wasn't able to attend Councilwoman Fox's event, because they were both simultaneous. You know, but again, what's great about that, both being, both events going on in two different parts of the city, but both were very well attended. Why? Because we have a great community base that supports families, that support each other. And so, I just want to give a shout out to the residents that came out to donate toys for the kids and some food for their families. And so, we were able to gift a bunch of families, a bunch of the kids, you know, again, when they got their toys, you know, and their parents, and they all walked away, they were, they were just having a blast, you know? So, again, we don't, we can't do this without the community support. So, thank you so much for that. And then, I also want to remind folks, City Hall will be closed from December 19th to January 5th. So, if you have any city business you need to take care of, please, you know, plan, you know, appropriately, so you don't get caught short, and you come knocking on the door on December 22nd, when we're closed, wondering, "Nobody told us." We also have signage up in front of City Hall to remind folks, it's also on our social media page. So, please, just plan accordingly. And with that, thank you so very much, enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Falk, District 4.
All right, thank you. All right, so first of all, I just want to congratulate both Councilwoman Gloria Gray, your toy drive on Saturday night was beautiful at Martine's. I love that venue. But it was beautiful and very festive, loved it, loved it, loved it. And then, congratulations to Councilman Alex Padilla. I think he's been having that toy drive every year for, like, clockwork, and those kids love it. It's very successful, congratulations to you. Like he said, a lot of times, our, our events kind of collide at the same day, same time, but we're with each other in spirit, and the main thing is that we're supportive of each other, and we're doing the work of the, of the council member by raising toys for our babies. So, we're with each other. I just want to give some thank yous really quickly to everyone. I had a toy drive at Darby Dixon for those families in Darby Dixon. And then, I had my big winter Wonderland event, and pretty much everybody here on this dais was there, so very supportive. I want to thank everyone for all of the support every year. Mayor, council members, our city clerk, our city treasurer, just our social media team works so hard, y'all, please give it up for Thomas Bun, and they are at all the events, they're amazing. And then, our Parks and Recs, Thomas Bun and his team, they work so hard. I also want to thank Newmark Mero, Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, my girl, KJLH, she is amazing, Adele Mar, she does my event every year, love her to death. Inglewood Park Cemetery supports all of us up here on the dais, so thank you so much. Monica Bravo, Cassie Burns, they come out to a lot of events. And then, LA Clippers, the Rams, our, my commissioners are always present and come to a lot of events. And then, Orlando Christmas Trees gave out seven Christmas trees this year, so thank you. And then, Republic Services, as well as, I am in the Divine Nine, I'm a member of Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And so, all of the fraternity sororities came out, supported, they either donated toys or were present and volunteered, so thank you, Divine Nine, for all of your support this year. And then, Henry Brown, my commissioner, was Santa Claus. I don't know if you saw that, but thank you, Henry Brown, for being Santa Claus. And then, lastly, I want to wish three very special people happy birthday. Erin Elsley, my I-Cop Center, happy birthday. Markeisha Murphy, Malcolm's mom, I want to wish him happy birthday. And last, but not least, our Councilwoman Gloria Gray, here on the dais with me. Happy birthday, Gloria Gray. So, that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Elmer Howes.
Thank you, I'll start with happy birthday, Gloria, again. She has like 10 parties all in one year. Listen, so much good stuff, we've come a long way. I mean, compared to us lighting our cool light bulb Christmas tree on the south lawn, and now, compared to what we do now, amazing. Thank you to the Clippers, who really throws one heck of a party over there at the Forum. We all enjoyed it, the parade, amazing. Police, thank you very much for bringing the sled out, letting us ride it. And just staff, staff are putting it together, I mean, amazing how much work they put into it and just make it look easy. I mean, we just get to show up and kind of just ride the sled, and, and thank you for that. So, everybody enjoyed the day, but what I really want to say is that when folks come into the city and they invest in the city, it's good enough. But when they become real corporate partners and really community partners and really kind of invest in those days for us, that's when it starts to really mean something. They're helping us build the community. Went to all of the events, or as many as I could. You know, Gloria had an awesome event Saturday night, I mean, real knives, real forks, real food, forget the snacks, right? That, that was a real party, beautiful. Alex had an awesome event, as always. And then, by the time I got to Dionne, she was skipping, like Alex says. She was over there skipping, I was like, "Where's Dionne?", she was skipping. So, it was nice, it was nice. But, but the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, this is a great city, and, and we're building a community together, and, and it's only because the residents support us all that we're here. So, thank you very much, and that's all I got, Mayor.
Great. Going to be redundant, but I'm going to talk about the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. You know, we had 8,000 people last December, we had over 10,000 this time. And the beautiful thing is, is that so many children get to skate and, and just do all kinds of things. It's, it's just, just a wonderful event. We had one child that came too late, and her mother called Maria and was very upset because her child didn't get a toy. Well, fortunately, we had a little bike left over, and so, last night, I drove it over to their house on Sixth Avenue. You'd have thought it was like the greatest bike ever in the history of man. You'd have thought it was like the greatest bike ever in the history of man.
It was for her.
So, so we we just um, we just have so much happiness. You know, I I want to go to Councilwoman Gray's uh party uh at the s- at the event center. The people are proud to be in Inglewood and she gives events. We're like the upper crust. I mean, eh eh there was so much happiness there. So I want to congratulate you for that, Councilwoman. That that was a classy, classy event. Uh, Dion, you know, she always does things there, Crenshaw Imperial and her Winter Wonderland. And again, kids love to get bikes. I'll tell you, she gave away like ten or twelve bicycles. I'm telling that 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 bicycle is the ticket. That's the ticket. Uh, Adele Mar.
Adele Mar.
Adele Mar is always there. Uh, I had, I had ten events this weekend. Now, this is the Minority Health Institute Award and there were two hundred physicians and their spouses there for this. And this was in the same night as a birthday party for Councilwoman Gray. And so it was a hard choice to make, but Dr. Purnell is my gastroenterologist. And when you get over seventy, two doctors, your gastroenterologist and your urologist are very important to you. And you do not, you do not disappoint them. And uh, he received an award and I was the presenter. Then uh, most of you don't, may not know Pastor Luther B. Keith passed. He was like, I, he was ninety or ninety-one. He had been uh pastoring in the city for about fifty years and myself and Councilwoman Falk were there to uh make a presentation to him and uh i- it was well received. And so, again, uh remember, City Hall is closed December nineteenth to January fifth. And with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.